We amended the notes for the old smoking bowls property. To was damaged rather than what was the other.
It was in there, I left it in there in parentheses.
Oh, you did, okay, yep.
Yeah, it's in there.
Yep. Okay, so that's all we're saying that it was damaged and that I forget what the other.
Substantial.
Substantial.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't quite substantial, so we just rather than judging, I would just say. So anyway. Go with the September fourth. Um, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move, I'm moving to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay, yeah, second. Anybody?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, okay, motion is passed. Next, we'll go on to the October second meeting minutes. Um, I'll take a motion. To approve.
I submit.
Second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Barring none, all in favor? Hi, hi, okay, motion is passed. All right, oh, item four here, citizens, do we have anybody on Zoom?
No.
Nope, okay, we have nobody here. So we'll go on to item five, discuss draft subdivision regulations. Uh, next open forum, review sample subdivision applications and fee schedules. Okay, so we, Regional Planning Commission amended these October first. We received them the day before the meeting, so we're giving everybody a month to look at them. So we can, if the board agrees, kind of go through the new ones section by section. And if anyone has any comments or revisions, we could address them there. Yeah, I guess that's probably the easiest way to do it. So. The authority and purpose, there is no change from the previous. Section one point two, purpose, I didn't see any there. I mean, a lot of this stuff is sort of boilerplate. Um, does anybody have any comments on section one point one or one point two?
No.
Okay. Going on, one point three. Basically, it says that we can amend these bylaws. Um, you know, based on or going through hearings and all that stuff, so they can be amended at any point.
Okay.
Okay, one point four, conformance with other regulations. Basically, the adoption of these bylaws shall not repeal any previous subdivision established before these bylaws were adopted. Okay. One point five, separability. Pretty straightforward. Okay, we'll go to article two, subdivision application procedures, two point one applicability. So it basically just describes what a subdivision is. And what would require a permit. Okay. So we went to two point two subdivision classifications. Um, on the previous. Uh, rendition, minor subdivisions, I believe, and please correct me, they, um, it was four. And now for a minor subdivision. We're calling for two lots. Anything over two. Um, would require a major. And on the previous, it was five lots would require a major subdivision. So I believe we made that change, um, a couple of meetings ago, maybe.
Being a new member, what, what was the reason for that change?
Uh, I think, uh. Uh, four. Was, we felt not enough. You know, breaking it down, making it two lots. Uh, was, um. Would be easier. Because. And then, yeah, major subdivisions is three or more lots, and then if it's act two fifty, would require. Five lots anyway.
Right.
And I, I think it may be two, just to protect, um, landowners in terms of. Um, you know, if it's four, that might be considered more of a major subdivision that could have more impact on neighboring properties.
Okay, yeah, I would, I would think that act two fifty would kind of take care of that anyways. I mean, we're considered a one acre town. Under act two fifty, so, um, any of the major stuff is gonna be taken care of under act two fifty. I, you know, I think. You know, this, I, I thought this was the same amount of pages, but you took the old one and cut it in half, right? Basically.
Yeah.
Which I haven't read this in full, I only read before the town meeting that you had. Um, but, uh. You know, maybe there's a way to simplify that and not have, uh, so many restrictions that would require so much administration.
Well, in terms of administration, we're hoping that the regional commission will administer it. And I guess in terms of act two fifty. I mean, they do, obviously, uh, they will review projects over five acres, but they also look at, um, local regulations. And I can, there's an example of the brewery where the planning commission signed off on it. And was for the project and that two fifty put additional restrictions and required a hearing. And we had hearings and we were like, listen, this isn't right, it's overreach, it was all about parking. And we had reviewed that, so they basically ignored us.
Interesting.
Yeah. They ended up cutting the hearing short because everybody was so angry. Here, we're trying to bring business into town and they wanted a parking study and all sorts of, yeah.
Well, we also need housing as well, so this, I feel is a bit, um, complicated to create housing. And that might be in a simplified manner.
I think, uh, if we get, if, if they don't have enough teeth, they're kind of useless. I mean, and, and the subdivision regulations, we'll get to the, uh, end of it where it, you know, the board does have, the planning commission does have the ability to waive any other requirements. So.
Us.
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
Um, which, you know, if you have a full board, you can have people that agree with the project and people that don't agree.
Has the planning commission agreed to manage the other aspects of this as written?
We would conduct hearings if there was a hearing required for a major subdivision, that would be our role to conduct the hearing. And, you know, give it an approval or not, and then if they, if the applicant wishes, they could, um, you know, if it's denied, they have recourse. They could go to the state environmental board or environmental court and, uh, you know, go that route.
Um, but just ask again, so has the regional planning commission agreed to take on the administrative role of this? Or do we, does the town need to hire somebody to do that?
They, Jason, a couple of times he agreed that they would definitely be interested, so.
Okay, but it's not confirmed that they would do that.
Does the select board have to work out, um, a fee with them as far as what that would be?
Mm-hmm.
Right, we can't do that, it would be the select board kind of communicating with the regional planning commission as far as, okay, if you agreed to do this, then this is how much they'll kind of need as far as the administration costs. Of it, is not something that we have the authority to implement?
Um. That's a good question, uh, we'd have to, planning commission would probably make recommendations. I'm assuming that, you know, we would look at different towns and we generally, like a subdivision application is like a two hundred dollars plus a recording fee. So, but that's something I think we would want to confirm.
I think I had, I've, it was in maybe the September meeting minutes, I remember something about Jason saying that they would, um, be able to take that on, but it would require further discussion, I think, with the select board, again, on an actual contract or an agreement.
Right.
To do that. But I can.
I think that's what he's expecting.
I think I can see.
Yes. But I think for the only, the only, the only way these, if these do pass, it, I think it makes sense to have the regional planning commission administer them. It just takes it out of the town, you know, rather than hiring somebody.
You wanna be policing your neighbors.
No, no. So. So let, let's discuss the subdivision classifications. I'm trying to remember, Miguel, do you remember what meeting that we had discussed that, when you're going from four lots to two lots?
Um, I think I'm going over the September minutes right now. I think it was prior to that, may have been in the August. Did we have an August meeting?
We didn't, we didn't have a quorum. I mean, my opinion is if we make it too high, like four for a minor, there's some things that could fall through the cracks in terms of. Concerns with neighbors. You know, impacts on neighboring properties. I mean, that's my concern, you know, somebody. You know, even like a two lot subdivision can cause havoc, you know, with drainage, all that stuff on neighboring properties. But, you know, whatever the board decides.
So what is the, even if it's two, one, four, whatever. This board is not certified to go in and assess drainage and engineering and all of that. Who does that? So you're, you're gonna say this, this property, it, you know, is gonna affect my property with drainage or whatever. I know we had in place a driveway permit that the, um, town manager or someone else would come out and just assess the property. We also have a building permit or construction permit that's fifty years old, that probably needs to be updated, which is not on this agenda. But, um. Is that what this is, is basically trying to update that or address those issues? You know, I personally can't go out to a property and look at it and say, yeah, you need, you need to put in a culvert there. I'm not qualified to do that.
Right, well, for a minor subdivision, um, well, for any, any application, the applicant would need to provide that information. If it's a minor, say you wanna do a two lot subdivision, would be pretty simple. You would need to hire a surveyor anyway.
Right.
Um, I know a lot of time, if it is a, if it's a small two lot subdivision. You know, I know Rick checks things out, you know, the planning commission could be involved too, you know, we like to be interactive. If it's a large one, you know, absolutely, the applicant has a responsibility to hire an engineer. You know, if they're doing a subdivision for profit, you know, they have to have all that stuff, so. But, um, but no, I mean. Ultimately, owners have to provide that information. And, you know, there's a lot of open source information, uh, VCGI, uh, all sorts of, that's, that's your open source free information that shows contours, elevations, uh, deer habitat, all sorts of stuff. Also the Vermont Atlas.
Yep.
So.
So it was the June fifth minutes where Steve, you asked Jason if, um, the Mountain of Scutney Regional Commission could take on the role of administrator for the town to enforce the subdivision regulations. Jason advised that would be, that would require a commitment by the select board to communicate such a request to the Mountain of Scutney Regional Commission and draft an agreement or contract for the responsibility of administrator. So that was in the June fifth minutes that they made a commitment, but he specifically said that the, um. Select board would have to draft or communicate a contract.
Right.
So.
Well, that's something, if this pushes forward to select board hearings, that would be something good to have a draft.
So yeah, so then, yeah. We have an administrator lined up, it would be the Mountain of Scutney Regional Planning Commission. And once the, uh, I guess, once the select board does kind of, we get this to them, then the next step would be. Making a contract and communication with the Mountain of Scutney Regional Planning Commission to take on the role of administrator. To enforce. So.
And, you know, realistically, how many subdivisions do we have a year, not that many. I mean, that may change, may not.
How many have we had this year for last, since, since COVID, since twenty twenty?
Oh, I'm not sure, there's the one up on Hill Road, there's one on Carlton. Don't know, a few. All right. Okay, do we wanna go to boundary adjustments? That does not, it doesn't, if you're adjusting your boundary and you're not creating any lot, then it doesn't require any subdivision review. Okay. So just going on to, uh. Two point four, the application requirements. And so on page three and four, that has all the lists of things that would be required. And then on page five, table one. That kind of shows. Between a minor and a major subdivision, what would be required, which I think. Was confusing on the last one because it was difficult to know what was required.
Are there any changes that we need to look at?
Um, let's see, twelve, additional plat requirements are supporting information if required based on the complexity of the proposed developments and determined by the planning commission. Yeah, that was changed from the last time. Number twelve, that was required, now it's basically, it's up to the planning commission if this additional information is required. And. Okay. So you could see. A lot of things aren't required for a minor subdivision. You know, like, uh, proposed utilities, infrastructure, rights of way, proposed building or development envelopes. You know, a lot of things that you would need an engineer for. You know. I mean, the idea is for these minor subdivisions, you know, not to have people have to spend tons of money on. You know, development plans and engineering, um, just a survey.
I know I've, I've said this before, I have three children and we have property. So for me to deed property to my three children, that would qualify under this plan as a major subdivision. And it would cost probably, knowing what I know about these costs, if we, if we broke it up, probably around twenty thousand dollars. To divide this up.
Tweet surveying and.
Correct.
Septic.
And that's before, that would be before anything is even approved. I would have to spend that money to do the application to bring it in, that is before anything is approved by the board.
Well, let's look at it, if you got a subdivide, you're gonna have to get a survey anyway.
Yep.
You're gonna have to have septic designs.
No, I can subdivide without a septic design. I can, I can give a piece of property to somebody.
Right.
To my kids, and they can figure out their septic design down the road. Yeah. But according to this, that's not the case. According to a major subdivision under here, that is not the requirement on this as it's written right now. So, um. You know, I'm happy to divide it up and pay for the, uh, the surveyor to come plot it out. And maybe a right of way to each property, but as far as everything else goes, that is, it's, it's an extensive cost.
Which, if you're subdividing, you wanna know where your septic's gonna be.
Absolutely.
Yeah, um. In terms of, you know, maybe this, we could look at that, that's a good point. I think it's important to know that each lot would support a septic system, maybe it doesn't have to be designed out. But, you know, test pits should be done, which I think you wanna do anyway. And just like a quick report, but, you know, not having to design a whole septic system until they're ready to build. I'm not sure how that would work. It could get complicated.
Yeah, it just, really, it just disables, um, already, my kids that are struggling to even remain in this state. To have an additional cost related to them to build here if they wanna stay here. Or, you know, you know, if we give them the property. Then, you know, they would have these additional costs, I just, I, I feel there's, there's gotta be a way to do this. That minimizes that for.
Are, are you saying that you'd like to, to give them the property without any idea of what's gonna be built on it, that's separate from being built up?
They can figure it out.
They can figure it out, so.
If I give them twenty acres.
So if you don't have.
I'm sure they can find somewhere around twenty acres that will.
So they own the property, but there's no, there's no design for building at that point, is that what you're saying, yeah?
Probably not, maybe they'll walk around and they'll, they'll find a spot, I don't know.
Reasonable, just to donate or give property to somebody without expectation, a building and then the person who.
I mean, it happens all the time, yeah.
The piece of property we bought did not. Decide whether to build or not, it's, I mean, it seems like that's probably what she's, I'm not sure.
Yeah, um.
All three of them actually we bought.
Right.
There wasn't a design for any of them.
Right.
The select board can also look at this and.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hear you, Maureen, I mean, you know, looking at it from subdividing for your kids. But there's also gonna be developers coming in that may wanna do like a fifteen lot subdivision. Of course, that would be.
And, and then coming back to the planning commission.
And that would go at two fifty.
They would have to get.
Absolutely.
They would have to get, um, sewer and water.
Hundred percent.
So.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we could look into a way where. Yeah.
I, I think act two fifty covers everything that's needed, I don't think we need to be messing around with a two acre subdivision, which is. I mean, I, in, you know. I, I think it's overreach on the part of the town, I think you can have, uh, restrictions in place for the driveway, update the driveway permit, update the building permit, update those things.
The driveway permit only covers from the right of way to the road.
Right, like twelve.
There should be a provision somewhere where a person is able to sell their land or give their land to somebody. And then that person has the deed and they make the decisions about, about what to do with the land, right?
Right.
And, and that is different from what we're, we're looking at as far as building, I think. I'm getting confused.
Well, it, with the, these draft subdivision regulations, any subdivision of land would come under these regulations.
And a subdivision would be taking even just what, the way this is written, one other lot. I, I live in my house and I wanna give twenty acres to my daughter. We would have to come before, obviously, we'd have to have it surveyed, come before the board. If I wanna give land to my other two children, it's a major, the way this is written, I would have to have all the infrastructure mapped out in place.
But if you don't know what's gonna be built there, you can't do that, right?
Exactly, thank you.
So there must be a provision for selling land separately than building, right, than building, there must be some sort of different differentiation. Don't.
Well, if you're subdividing, you're subdividing and it comes under the regulations, even, yeah, that's one lot. I mean, I think what we can do is look into if there's a way to subdivide, do a minor, maybe we, you know, maybe it's three lots as a minor.
Well, uh, I don't, yeah, I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting myself confused. But it seems like if you're, if you're gonna give land, raw land, it's different than if you're going to plan a, a buil, a building on each one. I mean, isn't there, I mean, you could sell some, a piece of land and give it to somebody else and let them make a decision.
Maybe they never do anything with it.
Maybe.
Maybe it's just land and they don't ever wanna build on it.
So I think we need to find a way to differentiate the, the selling of raw land or the donating of raw land or gifting. Somehow so that, that, those expenses are not incurred at the beginning, maybe it's ten years before somebody decides to put a project on there. I mean, it seems. It seems like they're two different things.
Right.
Subdividing land and making, putting buildings on it.
Yeah, I know, when we were up on County Road, we subdivided our land to make them two lots, but we never did anything with the other one and, you know, why would I pay to have a whole thing done for a property that I wasn't maybe gonna own?
I mean, if you sell it to a stranger, right, that, that's broad land to a stranger. You don't know if they're gonna just keep it for wildlife, for instance.
Well, the state takes, like the septic system, the state takes care of that, they notify the neighbors that, and they, you have to have a permit for that. So when you're putting in a septic system, that is something that is regulated by the state, doesn't have to be regulated at our level. But this town needs, you need to know, and maybe this is from what happened on Hill Road, from what I heard. We didn't know what was going on up there, right?
Right.
So the building permit, a driveway permit, whatever, and, and if that was or wasn't done, that's something that needs to be addressed. Not, you know, it's, obviously, it was in violation of the stuff that's already in place. And it wasn't enforced, right, is that what happened?
I guess so, yeah.
Um, so. Um, so. Here we are.
So I, I have a question about, cause I'm not in construction, I'm never subdivided land before and I don't build. So I just have a question about the twenty thousand dollar estimate that you're putting out. Is that for all three? If you wanted to subdive, sub- subdivide all three, you're estimating twenty thousand or just one subdivision is twenty thousand?
That's a really good question. I'm gonna ball, just ballpark stuff. When you have a surveyor come out and plot your land and do the maps that go along with it, that's gonna cost you about three thousand dollars, right? Right, Tim?
Yep.
Then you have somebody else come out and do um, the septic, soil testing, perk test, which you probably know better on that. I'd say maybe another three or four, right?
Yeah, at least three.
And that's for, you're saying soil?
You have to have an excavator come out and dig test pit.
Test to see if you even perk. That's not even to do, design anything.
It's a lot more expensive than it used to be.
What's, I'm sorry, what's the perk?
To tell you if you have water.
Sources of water.
Oh, like if you wanna drill a well?
Well.
Okay. So and you're.
And that defines where your septic goes to.
Okay, and so that's just for the well water? That's just looking to see if you could have a well on your property? That's two to three?
Yeah.
Well, the wells they could.
This is just, no, this isn't even.
Well, I'm, you know, you're, I'm just, I just, I think.
Have water there.
No, cause I think this is what we needed to go over. This is actually good. This is something, we needed to go over, but again, you know, do we actually need to get professionals in here to give us an accurate estimate of what, you know, your ballparking of twenty thousand? You know, should we get professionals in here? We can, we can delay this. I don't mind putting this off again, but if we're talking about actual cost and we owe it to the town and to the, all the people who are looking into this and watching us, that we need to bring in the professionals and say, okay, if you, you wanted to subdivide a land, what's it gonna cost for an actual survey? What's it gonna cost for the, the perk test? You know, all these additional costs, that way we can actually have, you know, an estimate and see what the actual costs we're, we're pushing or, you know, forcing people to take on at this point.
You're no longer talking about it's a two hundred dollar application fee, you're now saying all these other things that would be required just to apply.
If you saw the other, if you saw the other subdivision regs, one was a flat two hundred dollar fee and then another one, I think Ludlow's was had like fees for each of these things that the, you know, to do. But I don't know if that was, you know, just submitting that piece of paperwork.
Yes.
You know, kinda thing, you know, and not to say that we, we need to have it, but, you know, but on the, on, in the whole outlook. Everyone around us is moving forward with regulations and town plans and zoning, you know, we're still one of the only towns without this. And I still think it's still moving in a positive direction to have this. But, you know, we need to make sure that we're putting out accurate information, you know, and again, you guys have a little, the background, so I'm sure that twenty thousand is, is sincere in, in specific situations, your, your own personal and, and specific situations. But moving forward, I think it's worth the extra time and research to do, to do it right. If we're gonna put out costs, then we need to put it out, we need to do the research and actually have that kinda documentation, go, okay, we brought in all these professionals to do the subdivision before it even gets the application process, and this is what you're looking at, kinda thing. Because you do budget. When you're going to build something, you budget, you budget for your building costs, you budget for your, your extra, you know, your unknown costs. You budget for, you know, what you're actually paying the contractor, you know, you budget, so this is, you know, we need to provide that information that when peo- people come to this town, they know how much it's going to cost to subdivide in this town, right before they even apply. But they're doing it all over us, they're, you're doing it all around us, you know, that's why we had the submission of Weathersfield and Ludlow and all these other subdivisions. I think we need to move forward with this, but if we're going to have questions on costs, you know, I think it's worth it in, in moving forward, you know, with the most accurate information.
Yeah, I think we could give a range, you know, this is ballpark what it would cost.
Well, right, cause every contractor you hire is gonna be different.
And, and it depends on the size of the property and the complication of the, of the lot and everything. So it's really sites is specific. I was just throwing out a ballpark number because things are very expensive these days.
You know, you talk to the people who work in the town office, town manager and the town staff and, and Rick and one of his guys goes out on the roads, not only to look at how all the roads are doing, but all of a sudden they see new construction and they go back to the town office and they go, hey, this address is, has construction going on, do they file for the, um, it's not a drive, we keep on saying driveway permit, but it's.
It's an access.
Access permit, right of way permit.
You know, or did they, did they apply for the building permit? And they go, no. You know, so we have things going on in this town because we have no regulations and we have no enforcement.
Regulations, there's just no enforcement.
Yeah, exactly, you know, there's, and so it's needed, it really is needed going forward, kinda thing.
So going back to this, uh, there is, there is quite a cost. My point is there is a, a large cost before a subdivision, which, and I'm speaking for me personally, before I can give my kids any of my property, a large cost based on this, that would have to be handed out before it's even approved. That I have the problem with. So as far as building on the property, if we divide, like you said, if you divide up the property and if there's regulations before you can build to have all those other things, which I think a lot of those mechanisms are in place already with the state um, for um, the septic and all of those things. Um, you know, that's, that's different, but the way this is written, you can't even divide up your property at all without a, a large cost.
So they, it's the intent, I guess.
Yeah, the issue I, I see with, the issue I see with that is that somebody could come in, if we don't have subdivision regulations, but you could subdivide your land and not know where you're gonna put your house or your septic or your roads, you could just keep splitting off pieces of land, subdivide it, not build on it, and then someday, what? You have, you know, they could do two acre, one acre lots, potentially on a property that can't support it. I would rather see the number increased from a minor to four lots rather than, or not even have the subdivision regulations, cause I think it just, if you're gonna have subdivision regulations without having, you know, uh, restrictions or whatever.
You can't gauge intent, so you have to have something specific.
Yeah, cause yeah, someone could, they go, oh, wow, okay, I wanna subdivide this, I wanna, you know, I wanna do four or five lots. Maybe I'll build on them, maybe I won't.
Cause I think initially we were looking at, at size, looking at size of subdivisions for the minor and, and the large scale, you know, like if you have, you know, fifty acres and you just wanna divide that fifty acres into two, you know, twenty-five acre parcels, that's still considered a minor subdivision regardless of how big the property division, division is.
And you wouldn't have to survey and you, you wouldn't have to survey the entire property, just the new line.
Right.
So yeah, that, that's my concern. You know, I would either, you know, let's raise the criteria to, for minor to four and the major to five.
Just do away with the major. Act two fifty takes care of that. All of your criteria in major is under Act, is already under Act two fifty.
We, so, I didn't, I, so this draft was, the initial draft, who do we, could we, um, kind of copy and paste, um, Springfield's, I think we copied in spring and paste the Springfield's as a good model. And then, you know, we were looking at dwindling it down, so Jason helped us dwindle it down and all this is in conjunction or with the assistance of Jason saying, yeah, you know, we need to have minor and major, cause again, everybody else around us has distinctions of minor or major, even with also, you know, Act two fifty still being something that's out there.
Yeah, so Springfield has zoning, am I correct?
Yes, all the towns around us do.
So Springfield has zoning, um, you know, I think that's the difference. And all of the examples of the applications, which I like because they're very short and simple, um, are all from towns that have zoning.
That's right, so they wouldn't necessarily have Act two fifty come in.
Oh, correct. Well, these are all just an addendum to whatever their zoning is. Um, but I, I think, I don't know. I just, I think this can be pared, pared down to where it's just the minor. Keep it simple. The big developers are not gonna mess with anything less than five lots anyways. Is just my thought.
Um, I think, so like, when we first were discussing the minor and the major and how many, we decided, so Abe, Abe has five or six kids.
Yeah.
And he's like, I'm in the major, you know, kinda realm. So we have to have, we have to draw a line in the sand somewhere. Cause then we have people coming in saying, well, I have three kids or I have four kids or I have, you know, nieces and nephews that I may wanna include in the division of land in my will or something like that. You know, so, you know, Tim is saying four, we're at two, you know, moving forward, do we wanna make an amendment to it?
But Act two fifty is gonna do five and above anyway.
Correct. That's gonna take care of that.
Right.
And, you know, you, you had mentioned the division between dividing a piece of property and a subdivision, and are those two different things? Like, you know, when you just get a piece of raw land and you divide that and you sell that, are you gonna be under subdivision regulations for a building project or something, or is it just?
It's also an appeal process at the end too.
Right, right.
I, I would like to keep it as it is and then finish this with our suggestions or so on. And then, um, with the appeal that's available, send it on to the select board and there's another chance to make a bunch of changes.
Cause I don't know if there's any type of amendment we could put in here that, hey, I want, I'm gonna subdivide, you know, but I don't wanna incur all this costs, you know, if we don't build for five years, then we don't have these, we don't have to do these, these things.
As written, you are requiring these costs.
Yes, that's what I mean.
As written.
You know, to where if we can make an amendment, like what you wanna do, hey, you know, I think it's about, it's, it's that time for, for us, we wanna subdivide and just have this done, kinda thing, but we're, there's no plans to build for at least five years at least. You know, I don't know if, if we could do an amendment like that, kinda thing, or two years. We don't wanna build for, for two years. But in the two years, then you're, you're gonna be subject to the application process, kinda thing.
Shouldn't it just be, I mean, what if you have raw land for twenty years or however long it is, it shouldn't, you shouldn't have to do the application until you're ready to actually act and do something on the property.
Well, that's what I mean, so what does it hurt to not subdivide if you're not ready?
What if I die?
Or what if I decide I, I wanna sell it? I don't ever wanna be on it.
I don't want that property, you know, or I, you know, something happens and, yeah.
So the way it's written.
Yeah, I get it. Yeah, I totally get that, that, that little loophole, that specific scenario, kinda thing.
So that would be the process to, to address this situation perhaps, is that what you're saying?
It, it could, you know, again, if someone wants, if we can find a middle ground, but if, you know, if you, if you're just, if you're just noting an objection kinda thing to it.
Uh, what's the definition of subdivision? I guess that's what it needs to be. Is it just any sale of, of a piece of property or is it development of a property?
It's the division of land into two or more lots.
Okay.
Whether or not there's development.
I think that's, you know, what, how the state identifies it.
Yeah, again, we're, we're a little island, that'd be, you know, we're, so we just decided like on the last one that we're not gonna do with anything with the Airbnb's that everybody around us wants to be doing, you know, with, you know, a, a registry and fees and things of that nature, you know, we're a little island of, you know, and that's great, bring your Airbnb's to Cavendish, you know, kinda thing, we're, you know, we don't have the registry that other towns have, but, you know, all, all around us, since we don't have zoning, you know, again, I think this is something that our town needs. You know, going forward, again, the, the positive outweighs some of the, you know, minor things for some individuals who have certain situations that, you know, pertain to them, kinda thing, but again, so if we can find an, an amendment or put an amendment in there, kinda thing.
Revision.
Yeah, or a revision, kinda thing, you know, we can, you know, we could do whatever. You know, like I said, you know, we, there's no rush in this.
Yeah, but yeah, it's been a year of working.
Yeah, I mean, we need to get some advice from Jason or legal. Cause I think we're wading into some legalese here that may not be appropriate.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I hate to, like I said, I hate to force somebody to have to go through that process when I just wanna subdivide, kinda thing, and just have that in place. And we don't have plans to build right now, but you're making us go through this process, you know, to, you know, of and we're not ready to build, we just wanna subdivide.
And even if you, you subdivide and you end up selling that other lot to someone, they're gonna go ahead and have the perk test done and all that themselves. Cause they're not gonna, they're not gonna buy the property without knowing, so that's probably gonna happen either way.
Maybe that could be applied just to the minor. You know, we could take the provision where you don't have to have a full-blown septic plan, you know, for a minor application. That way, it uh, takes away the possibility, like for a major, if someone does that to a major, like I said before, they could just subdivide it into who knows how many lots.
That's gonna, and that's, again, is gonna be under Act two fifty.
Yeah, but they don't have standards.
Act two fifty?
No, not like, they don't have like standards for each criteria. It's up to them. I mean, they rely on their, you know, di- different.
Yeah, they want the towns to come up with their, the product.
I mean, we, towns should have their own kinda subdivision design standards that Act two fifty can look at and say, oh, okay, they have, they have their, they have their subdivision regulations. This is what they'd like to see, let's approve it. Other than them, you know, Act two fifty, the board just said, well, you know what? We think there's some sort of, you know, rare endangered species that's within five hundred feet of the nearest house. So let's, you know, let's.
It's more personal at this level than it is at the state level. You can do things like, um, appeals and stuff like that. It's, it's more general and less, less personal.
Yeah, I just have a real issue with the state kinda dictating, you know, land use regulations. Yeah, and, you know, for small projects, I mean, obviously, Act two fifty has done good things, but. So that's.
Can we table that portion and continue, um, with this, or are we going to wait until or go to Jason and ask about that section?
Yeah, let's do that.
Is that already?
That's important. I mean, I think that's important.
We need to, we need to get some more advice on that.
A lot of people in this community.
Of course.
And I think that's.
Yeah, he's, he's a lot more knowledgeable, cause again, he's regional and he knows what's going on all around us and he might be able to explain it better, cause again, we're not experts on it, kinda thing.
Trying to do the best.
And we don't have a planning staff, you know, like Ludlow, a lot of towns, they have, you know, they.
So we want, we're gonna table it.
Yep.
And request, make a request to Jason to attend the next meeting to really kind of answer those questions for us?
Yes.
Just so that I have it in the minutes?
Yep.
Okay.
Sound reasonable?
That's fine. I, and I just wanna circle back to, there was discussion about reducing. That's fine, I, and I just wanna circle back to, there was discussion about reducing, uh. The, you know, making the minor more like four lots.
Yeah, that doesn't help Abe.
We could do that, I mean, that would be.
Doesn't help Abe.
Well, I mean, at some point.
So, I mean, you know.
Just be all minor and then let Act two fifty take care of the rest and that simplifies the entire process. So.
I mean.
You can table that too, but I think that's.
We can table it, um, again, um. I just, again, you know, where are we gonna draw the line in the sand? When it comes to minor versus major.
Right there.
Kinda thing, four?
Four lots, anything five, is it five and over?
Yeah, I hate for Act two fifty.
Act two fifty is five and over and everything else is a minor, you get rid of the major, uh, category, you don't have to deal with all the red tape.
And then we don't have to go to Jason, we could just do it.
Exactly.
Would we, uh, still keep the requirements, you know, subdivision standards?
Well, it's gonna be a lot less expensive under the minor than it is the major.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cause you're just gonna have to get your, your map, which you'd have to do anyways. Um. Town plan indoor, you know, compliance. Uh. Pending applications that would come under variance if you didn't, if you didn't have it, right? And the A and R, Vermont A and R Navigator results is just printing, printing the map, be very, I think, very simple.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that might be your only chance of getting this actually passed. Through the members of this community.
Mm-hmm, okay, well, that's possibly, we don't know. You know, it's, I mean, twenty years ago, I would've said, hell yeah, no way I would ever go through. Now, I don't know, but, um, I hear what you're saying, I do have reservations, I'd like to kinda get some input from Jason. Just on the ramifications.
Fine, and those two issues?
Yeah, yeah, cause I think it's, if they're, if they don't have any teeth. It's like you might as well not have them.
If you're a major.
Oh.
Yeah, within the villages.
Yeah.
Which is important.
But that's gonna be covered under Act two fifty, cause no person who's. Cutting their two, their property in half is gonna put in sidewalks.
Would, I think that's mainly for like, say if it was like a, you know, large subdivision in town.
Also, where is this land that magically exists in town that that's gonna ever happen?
Hmm, there's a few spots, I think.
Yeah, if you tear the school down, maybe.
Well, there's, um, up on Twenty Mile Stream. There's across the way, I mean, there is land that could be developed.
Yeah, but it's not really in the village.
Uh, that, I don't know, they, but it would be close to the sewer.
Is the village.
Yeah, yeah, it's some of the side streets. Um. I mean, I have a fifty acre parcel that's within the village.
On top of a hill, right?
Uh, yeah, but I mean, it's all developable, yeah.
And you're gonna put sidewalks into the roads that don't have sidewalks?
I'm not doing anything.
You know what I mean, like there is no sidewalks to get there, so why would, why should you be required to put them in? In yours, if they don't go anywhere, you know what I mean? Like if it comes down onto your road, is there a sidewalk on your road?
No, no, probably not for that one, but.
But yeah, but that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to look and see.
But I, and that's where, you know, the appeal thing comes in, from, from the other end, but.
Well, that too, I mean, that, a situation like that, the planning commission could just look.
Right, you're looking at the actual location and saying, this isn't necessary.
Yeah, e- exactly, so, and that may be the case, that there may not be any. But we don't know, I mean, there could be. Cause there's no, uh, standards in terms of lot size, so.
It's zoning, right?
That's zoning, yeah. So anyway. Okay. Where are we here, section three point two? Subdivision standards.
Were there changes from the last one?
Um. I didn't get that far, tell you the truth. Let's see, what is that subdivision standards? Okay, from the old one, it has general standards. So it does, I did actually look at this one. It kinda condensed them. It, uh, I think it, it combined section from the old one, three twenty, protection of natural or cultural resources. With the general standards. Yep. So combine those two.
Okay.
Anybody have any comments on that?
Nope, we've been over it a long time.
Mm-hmm.
I guess my only comment on, um, uh, Act, under Act. Um, it says the planning commission may require preparation of sediment erosion control plan to ensure site improvements, et cetera. Um.
Which, which, um.
Under Stormwater?
New one.
Page eleven.
Three point two subdivision standards, F. Um, again.
Stormwater, is that what you're doing?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Um, and. Uh, I apologize, are these related to all subdivisions, minor or major or both?
Uh, I believe they are for all of them. Yes, minor and major.
Especially Stormwater, right?
So it's not, um, on your summary table, it's not listed as that's required, but.
Oh, okay.
Only under major.
Oh, well, oh, okay, maybe that isn't, if it's not, then it isn't because.
Hi.
It says may require, it does not say will, will be required. I think that's the main thing is that depending on what type of application is submitted. And, you know, the overall. Application that it may be required, it's not a requirement.
Right, that would depend on the budding landowners, the proximity to their house property to the proposed subdivision. I think that's pretty important stuff, is Stormwater, I think the town should have, so, you know, if there are any issues.
Was there something on here that you?
Uh, no, I just, um, just was curious if, if that was a requirement for both and so on. It's, it's just, it, the language, it just leaves all of these decisions up to the planning commission, which is great. But, um, again, I'm not a professional on erosion control, um.
Well, erosion con- and control is one of the most important things in Vermont.
Oh, yes.
I would agree, but would, would that be better left to somebody that is a professional in that regard, rather than the planning commission?
And how would that? Would the.
I don't know.
Planning commission would hire the professional?
You tell me.
No.
That's why we're having this discussion.
No, I mean, that would be up, I mean, hopefully you may have somebody on the planning commission that understands that stuff. A lot of planning commissions do, or the town manager. Um, if it's a really critical site, it's possibility they may have to hire somebody.
Just a conversation, I, I just wanted to, that, you know, I think about costs of these things for the applicant.
Oops, sorry.
And that's, that's one.
Yep. Right, I think, yeah, we're all sensitive to that, we don't wanna like, you know, break people's bank accounts to. Subdivide a piece of land.
What you're going to next?
Uh, well, I'm just still page twelve, if anybody's going over that, traffic and road capacity. Then, um. Thirteen, yeah, goes over driveways, basically some engineering requirements, pedestrian and bicycle accommodations in villages. Again, I mean, yeah, we may not have a big subdivision in the villages.
Yeah, a lot of this, some, uh, we're a hamlet anyway, right?
Well, that's what they're trying to make us.
I mean, you're thinking it's, it's coming from towns like Springfield where their village is obviously much larger and they have a much bigger infrastructure than we.
Right.
Ever will.
Right, and I think it too, yeah, it's part of, it's something that, um, maybe it won't happen in town. But who knows what kinda development could happen in twenty years, fifteen, twenty years, I don't know. I mean, something that could be redundant.
These can be amended if there's a big issue.
I mean, this could be H, I think that could be. Pruned down.
Which one are you talking about?
Uh, I'm page thirteen, H.
H, H.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I mean, it's important to have there if it ever happens.
Yeah.
You know.
I think, I mean, you know, that's like the planning commission may require a twenty foot wide perpetual easement or right-of-way for future pedestrian or bicycle. Connections. I mean.
Recreation or shopping areas, I, I can't wait.
Yeah, right? Bike, you know, bike paths, yeah.
Waiting for my shopping area to pop up.
So, okay, uh, go on to administration and enforcement.
Is the administrative officer at this point is that, I mean, it's going to be someone on the regional?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's kinda.
And it.
Its own thing.
Right, and enforcement would come from the select board.
But then what happens?
Uh, well, the select board can. Tell, you know, if there's a violation, you know, they can issue a warning, a letter. Kind of what happened on Depot Street last year. And then, you know, there could be a hearing, and then it could go to environmental court. You know, they could, the, uh, appellate, landowner can appeal it. So.
It's sort of listed here, the pro- the process, right?
Mm-hmm.
So.
See, the administrat- administrative officers will inform applicants that state permits may be required. Okay. All right, anything else on that? Public hearing notice requirements. I think this is all just boilerplate. Okay, written decisions. Let me know if I'm going too fast.
Nope.
All right, enforcement penalties. I mean, this is a little easier to explain this stuff.
Explaining the process and.
Mm-hmm. All right. Section four point seven, recording requirements, duh, duh. I think a four, uh, four, four point eight is pretty important, waivers. Basically, it gives the planning commission the authority to modify any subdivision requirement. Which I think is important.
Especially, uh, since we're not a large town with.
Right.
The laws that can cover everything, you need to have some judgment along the way.
Absolutely.
Especially in a small town.
Everything is a judgment, you know, every project is different. And I think, you know, cabinet, we have a history of, you know, not putting screws to people in terms of. Well, you know what, this is, you know, in terms of maybe requiring, um. I shouldn't really get into that, like flood hazard regulations, there can be some wiggle room. That.
You have to start from somewhere.
You gotta start from somewhere, right, rather than, you know, looking at the regulations, nope, nope, you can't do that. And while for flood hazard regulations, we do require, we do rely on the state to, state flood engineer. So, okay. Definitions. We're getting to the end. Anybody have any? Comments on that?
Nope, thank you.
Okay. And there's resources. And we'll say. So that's good to have that. Okay, so, let's just summarize then, so we're gonna, I'll contact Jason, explain where we're at. Terms of, oh, um, what he thinks of, just having a minor subdivision. And not a major, what the implications would be, and also, um. Having different require, like less requirements for a minor in terms of locating your septic field and all that stuff and having.
The, the expenses that go up in front of the application or with the implication or with the. Um, s- subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And you know, like any other law, you know, they're meant for like ten percent of the population. The rest of us follow the laws.
Yeah.
So you're kinda like, if they protect us from bad actors that may come into town and just do whatever the heck they want.
That's what laws are all around, yeah.
And there wasn't any, uh, enforcement?
No.
I've got people, you've got volunteers, you've got, you know, just neighbors, you know, so.
I guess.
It's harder in that, in that.
I'm struggling if there's no enforcement with what we have right now, then what is this going to do?
It's, it's setting a precedent by putting, putting some things in. Down on paper and then you, you go for them, you say, well, this doesn't, this affects me in a, in a bad way or something, and so you can discuss it.
Yeah, and we. Oh, sorry.
No, that's it.
And we haven't had any real, um, strong regulations, I mean, yeah, we have our building permit, which is. Whatever, the driveway permit. We haven't had any, I mean, there's the.
And, and this is coming down to us from this select board, do something about it, so, that's what we're doing.
Mm-hmm, and I know we've had a history, I mean, in terms of not enforcement, but holding, you know, make. You know, making people for hot flood hazard regulations, having hearings and all that, so. Okay, so let's move on. Um old business, I did write a letter to the. Select board regarding our um short term rental study. Um I just wrote it tonight, so I haven't emailed, if anybody, if you have any, whatever, I haven't sent it yet. Um what else? Oh, we did get uh approval for our enhanced energy plan from the regional planning commission. They voted it in, so we just need to kind of update the town plan a little bit.
That's our next step, isn't it?
Well, just include that in, well, that's another thing too, that, I mean, I don't think our town plan has to be revised until. What, six more years, five, four? But it's complicated and it would be good to somehow start doing that when we have time. Cuz I think once we kind of finish the subdivision regs, there's not a whole lot on our plate.
So we can look at that.
We could look at that, I think uh floodway stuff, I'm on a committee in Ludlow to look at town owned land. For flood mitigation and Fletcher Farm and the um property that used to be the hotel. I think Revit Field, that might be an interesting project for the planning commission to spearhead to see how, what the town wants to do. With it, um I don't, sounds like it wouldn't, I don't think it's gonna be baseball fields.
Not anymore, right?
No, and if they, if they wanted to, they would have to go through flood hazard regs. Which no one ever did back then, you know, the, all that stuff. So I mean, there's a duh, there's a lot of possibilities for that property, you know, in terms of recreation, flood management. So that might be a nice positive thing.
Part of it's going back to wetlands, isn't it? I mean, wetlands for flood.
Yeah. Yep.
Dog park.
There was a project done in Brattleboro after Irene, a big flood plain that the town owned, it spent a lot of money on it. And they replanted it and they recreated it and there was a site visit, which I wasn't able to make, but um. It actually helped during the last storm, it did a lot. Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, actually, the, actually, the town did not incur the debt for the project.
Oh.
It was a two mil- it was two million dollars and the town did not incur the debt, I guess they got it from. Various grants or from the state. Going by the letter that they gave from the last one. The wet stone brook for the flood plain.
That's right. Yeah, so that's it, um I think that would be a good project, I don't know what everybody thinks about it, just over time.
Cuz she, Kelly Stettner recommended turning it into a natural, natural nursery. Um for flood plain um. Yeah, with native plants and trees, cuz then also you could pull from that nursery for other projects to help other. Areas that were identified as, you know, needing some reinforcement and and things like that, so.
Yeah, no, that's good, Fletcher Fields too, the the field that's closest to Ludlow, that's gonna be turned into a. Sort of like what you're saying, a nursery, they'll take cuttings from it, um so.
Good.
Yeah.
Tim, when you said that, uh what what was the future with um addressing the town plan, what was the exact? Are we going to like just go over it, we're gonna update it, what were we gonna do?
Well, I think we should look at it, everybody should kind of look at it and maybe. Start from a broad picture, just just see how it.
Is this?
Relates to what we think we need now.
Is it coming from the select board or is this a requirement?
It's a requirement.
Every.
Oh, yes.
It's what, it's every five years?
I think it's every eight.
Every eight.
And.
And it's, you know, I'm just wanting to get the language right, what is the select board asking us to do with the town plan?
They're not asking us.
Okay.
Nope, nope, uh Jeff Strange had brought it up, and I think we thought it was a good idea, just to kind of get a head start on it.
Cuz it takes.
Long time and it's very dry.
It's exciting.
Kind of like subdivision regulations.
Riveting, but like six times longer.
Yeah.
Five years, this is one so far.
Yeah, so since we don't have subdivision regulations, I know our town plan is, has some teeth. So. Which, if we don't have zoning, it would be a good thing, cuz that way, just for Act two fifty, we can. You know, we have some say in that, but, so I mean, that's something we can look at.
And the flood regs you just did and the energy thing get added to it, correct?
Uh they, the energy, the enhanced energy chapter gets added to our current town plan. And the flood hazard, they they're, they just refer to them.
Oh, okay.
But flood hazard regulations, so. So anyway. Okay, review correspondence, we did that, any other business, anybody wants to discuss?
No.
Okay, well, thanks, everybody, I think it was a great discussion. Oh, yeah, no, we will, yeah, I think, yeah, thanks, a great discussion, I think, we're moving forward. Motion to adjourn.
Real quick, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Did anybody, did we wanna review your letter or make any changes? Did we need to agree with it or, I'm just asking?
I'm just, it's the courtesy, if you wanna make changes.
I I'm I'm asking you, did did we, you gave it to us to just to say, he- here's your copy?
Yeah.
This is what's going?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Or you can, if you want any.
Us to look at it and and, you know, make changes or look at grammatical errors?
You can.
No? Just checking.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
All in favor? All right, awesome, good.